To the Milford School Committee meeting of March thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. There are members of the media in attendance. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any of the committee members know. Thank you, and again, good evening. The first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes? Can I have a motion, please? Motion from Joe, second from Scott, all in favor. In unanimous. Announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anybody have announcements, correspondence, and distributions?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes, sir.
So it's that time of year again. It is prom season, as was the case every year. So tomorrow evening is the Milford High School Junior Prom. As we head into this time of year with, this sort of kicks off the, the spring activities here between concerts and the prom, and then we head into senior week activities. I just, I want to encourage all students and, and parents to really just be safe. It's a, it's a fun time of year. It's a great time of year to be able to celebrate, you know, your class and, and time with your friends. But I just, I always get very, very nervous as a parent and as a, as a resident here, as we head into this time of year. So have a wonderful time and wish you nothing but the best. Have a wonderful time tomorrow evening at your prom and as we head into the rest of the season here. But please make sure that you use good judgment. If you've got somebody that's drinking or somebody that's making poor decisions, help them. And, and, and try and, and make sure that you're helping yourself to be safe as well as others. And certainly enjoy your time and, and good luck.
Thank you. Doctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a few announcements. First, I want to just invite the public. Milford High School's Global Citizenship Program will be hosting a movie screening of Girl Rising on April fifth at six thirty PM in the Milford High School Auditorium. This will be followed by a keynote speaker and a little discussion. There is information to register on the Milford Public Schools' website. I also want to recognize Kurt Shady and the Woodland faculty for their international night held this week. Many countries and cultures were highlighted with presentations, food, and great projects, and it was a really well-attended event, a fantastic event. I also want to commend the Milford High School Theater Workshop for the performance of Guys and Dolls. As always, it was a phenomenal show and was the clear result of a lot of dedication, hard work, and time by the students and the faculty. And we've got some very good news as well. The E-Rate funding for the Milford Public Schools' infrastructure project was released today by the federal government, and we're in the process of scheduling the project installation for both Milford High School and Brookside Elementary School. So that will be in process. We're hoping to get that rolling around the April vacation. And the last piece, and this is just a reminder, this year, families of students entering grades one through five will be notified of their class assignment the week of August fifteenth. Historically, we, we have provided classroom assignments on the last day of school. We are shifting the dates due to fluctuating enrollments over the course of the summer, shifts in teaching or grade level assignments of our faculty, and providing our administration and faculty teams more time to ensure that we are making the best possible placement for your child. Thank you.
So our conversation this morning about the E-Rate funding, it came through?
It came in through, maybe an hour after we had our conversation.
Okay, okay. And I also would like to send a special thank you to Kurt Shady for last night's event. I attended it as well. It was very well-attended. It's amazing to see all the different cultures that are in.
It's awesome.
Yeah, in the school district. So great job to Kurt and everybody at the Woodland School that participated. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just one more thing. So unfortunately, just one thing I, I want to make sure we brought up as well, and just would ask if the committee would indulge. We actually had a longtime volunteer of Milford Public Schools, a woman by the name of Penny Allen, who actually passed away last Saturday. Her funeral was actually earlier this evening. Her, her daughter was actually a, was a, was a teaching assistant in our shining star as well. I just ask if we can take a moment, observe a moment of silence.
Sure, and I apologize, I didn't know anything about that.
That's okay.
May I have a moment of silence, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you. Okay, next agenda item is invitation to speak. Seeing there's nobody here. I apologize. Next agenda item, school choice, public hearing.
Participation.
Do you have to speak to that?
No, we just have to vote that if we're going to open up the school district to school choice.
Okay, I thought you, I thought you had a short presentation on it.
It's part of the budget proposal.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is more about the annual, just saying we're going to participate in the school choice.
Okay.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of the public that may be watching as well, can we just, just kind of give a quick overview of what we're voting on?
Absolutely, absolutely. I could definitely do that. So basically, the vote tonight will be, is whether the Milford Public Schools will participate in the choice-in program. Every district in Massachusetts, students could choice out to districts that accept students for the school choice program. Historically, we have, we participated in this program, and we basically do it by grade level where we have room for enrollment. So anybody who's interested in choicing into Milford, if we have room in a particular grade level, we basically have a waiting list. And once we are able to open that grade level up, we open that grade level up and allow students in. Once the grade level is filled, we have to close the grade level out. Is basically how it works.
Okay, Joe?
Just to underscore a point that you just made, because there is a lot of confusion in the public about school choice. And we, we can decide whether to allow kids to come into the district, but we have no, no choice or no authority over whether or not kid, students choose to leave the district. So the, the vote today is just whether we want to allow kids from outside of the Milford community to come into the Milford Schools.
Anybody have any questions? Any more discussion? Any motion from Joe, second from John, all in favor? Thank you very much. Next, next agenda item is report of, report of the superintendent of schools.
Excellent. I want to direct the committee to the packet, which is just an overview of the budget proposal. And I'm going to walk, quickly walk the committee through the proposal. And I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to open it for questions as I go through, or do you want to wait till the end?
I'd, well, I'll leave that up to the committee. I would prefer to wait till the end, have the questions come at the end, but.
Prefer to leave it open if we have questions as we're going through as well. But as much as we can save them for the end, but if there's something that's coming up.
All right.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with Scott. It might be easier to clear something then rather than get five more pages deep.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
You're lost on it.
I'm good with it.
Okay, so I want to start at the, the school-level service budget. Came in at five point nine percent. We had proposed and approved three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars of new initiatives. Through budget reductions and revolving reallocation, we reduced the amount by seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and four, which puts our proposal at a two point four-one percent increase for the general budget and a two point five percent increase for special education and English learners' programming, which makes our total two thousand and eighteen request at forty-six million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred. The next sheet is.
Actually, if I could just, I'm sorry, I'm the one that brought it to the committee.
You're breaking your own rule already.
I know, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I just, for the general public to understand, kind of an apology to you. In years past, we had always, you and I spoke this morning, Doctor, we always held the general ed budget and the special ed budget. We kept them apart. And last year, we had merged them together, which added some confusion. So we, I, as the chairman of the committee, I apologize to the general public. We now have gone back to the old formula from the Finance Committee, which is we run the general ed budget and the special education budget. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next, the next page is basically the approved budget initiatives. And I'm not going to walk the committee through these because we've already spoken about them. So I'm going to shift to the next page, which is the summary budget reductions, reallocations. And basically, the out-of-district movement, this is out-of-district special ed placements, and this number fluctuates for a couple of reasons. Sometimes students age out earlier than we expect. Some students move out of the district. Sometimes students move to a less restrictive environment, and that has an impact either positively or negatively. And this, this amount actually reduced by a hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifteen. There's also two additional retirements at fifty thousand, a copier lease reduction. And we reduced some costs through the budget process as well as shifted some things to one-time expenses on this list. I don't know, this might be a good time to stop if any members have a question.
So I just have a quick question. So the first question I have is, is I just want to make sure whether it's a typo or that's, or whether there's a difference here. On the front page, sort of the executive summary page, it says budget reductions of seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars.
Yep.
The page that we were just looking at, which is the summary of, of the budget. I'm assuming that that's the, this is the details of that line item.
It is.
There's a difference of forty thousand dollars. Top of that page says seven hundred and thirty-three versus seven hundred and seventy-three.
Okay, I think, I think the number on the first page is. The number on the first page is accurate. I think it's just a typo.
That's why I, I.
No, it's a great question.
I didn't want to assume.
No, no, great question.
So it is, so the budget reduction is actually seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on this page? All right, I'll shift to the next one. The salary contract obligation comes in at one million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven. The teacher contract union increase is the bulk of that, which is one million, five hundred and one thousand, six fifty-six. The ASME union obligation is coming in at sixty-four thousand, four seventy-seven, and the non-union increases are thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fourteen.
Just, Kevin, for the benefit of, of the public, the teacher contract negotiation, I think, is very transparent, very clear. Non-union, I think, makes a lot of sense as well. You want to just detail just who the ASME is, union obligation is?
Those are our custodians, our secretaries, and I believe our cafeteria workers as well.
Yep.
The next page just gives you the detail on the out-of-district increase, eight hundred and three thousand, nine seventy-four. A large percentage of that came from students, a small number of students who moved in after April first, two thousand and sixteen, which is four hundred and fifty thousand. And in addition to that, each year, the private schools that students attend, there's a tuition increase connected to that.
So are we seeing an increase, a decrease, or a, or a flattening in the number of students?
We're actually look, we're actually getting that information right now. We're looking at the last ten years, just to see the data. It shifts a little bit, fluctuates. I think overall, the numbers are down in terms of pure numbers, but I'll have the actual numbers probably sometime next week.
Okay.
And it's in a ten-year trend. Okay?
Is that going to break up the in-district and the out-of-district trending?
What do, what do you mean, Joe?
So the, the special ed, factored into the special ed costs is the in-district expense as well as the out-of-district expense, right?
Yep.
So we put that trending together, are we going to have both?
We can, we can look at both numbers. Yep, we can absolutely look at both numbers.
One thing that I think, Joe, I think you bring up a good point. One thing that I think would be helpful as we, as we continue through this budget season, and I think just as a move forward for this board, is as we're looking at expansion of programs, utilization of programs, things of that nature, I think also continuing to do the, the cost-benefit analysis of, such as, example, we're going to increase funding to a, a special education project, program that we're expecting is going to keep, we're able to now keep X number of students now in-house. Well, if it costs us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to implement the program, or forty thousand dollars to send the kids out of district, I want to be very clear. My first preference is always to educate Milford kids in the town of Milford, but we've also have to balance the, what's the cost-benefit of that as well? Can the student be better served in an existing program where it's a better balance, the student's still getting what he wants, what he or she needs, we're still able to support the services? What's that cost-benefit analysis? I think that's an important thing of, are we adding programs to try and keep kids in Milford, but we're spending more than it would cost us to send them out?
And that I can say we, we do with a hundred percent confidence. Each year, we assess kind of the needs of the students who are in our sub-separate programs, levels of populations of students with similar disabilities, and always look at, does it make more sense? And again, I agree with Scott. We really try to educate all of our Milford students in Milford, in the community. It, it generally is a much better fit and much more comfortable.
With the peers.
Yeah, and they're part of the Milford community, which is what we really want.
Yep.
All right. Let's shift to the next page. Transportation department savings. We purchased a seventy-one passenger bus in two thousand and seventeen, and this is basically allowing, and there's, there's a, there's a few other details here that I won't go into unless members have questions, but the total projected savings is eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. And that's based on transportation of students with disabilities, athletic trips, field trips, and a midday preschool run that we do.
That bus cost us one-ten?
You know, I'm not sure, roughly.
I want, I want to say, because I, I believe our break even on the purchase of that bus.
Would be the second year.
Was year two.
Yep.
Yeah, it was very quick. That was one of the reasons why when last year we made that decision.
It was kind of a no-brainer.
That it was, it was like a year and a half in that we broke even. It was during year two that we broke even on that.
That's correct.
Now, you're not referring to the two buses we bought with the stimulus?
No, no, that's, this is, this is a bus, this is a purchase, this is a bus we purchased.
Last year.
Last year.
It was last year's budget.
Correct.
Ah, correct, okay.
And we're already seeing the benefit.
Good. Mike, so a quick, quick, quick question on that. So there's clearly a benefit here with this, the purchase of this one bus. At what point does it make sense to look at perhaps purchasing another bus and saving money?
I think we're, Len, Len Morcone is always looking at that in terms of, there's, there's a few factors. There's the number of trips that we'd be able to do with the bus, the consistency of use, as well as, I think, that just when the personnel costs are connected into it.
And repairs.
Yeah, if, if I can, Mr. Chairman. I think we've had that conversation either as a subcommittee with, with Len and Kathy, or I have at one point, and it, it's something he has looked at, but there didn't seem to be any additional savings by purchase in another, an additional bus. I don't want to speak for him, but that's a conversation I do remember having at one point.
But again, as programming shifts or as needs adjust, you know, we're going to enter into the conversation again, I think, in the next couple of years.
Last year is part of the budget conversation, because we did, I think you actually may have even asked the question, Joe. We definitely had that conversation during our budget defense conversation, and it was the additional bus, what was the big savings for this was actually, if you look, it was actually the athletic trips and the field trips. If we were to add an additional bus, there's not the additional need for usage on it, because it's, because of the way the scheduling works on it. The additional use of the bus, the, the break even actually goes further out on it, because there's, there's not the additional need for field trips and athletic trips without adding an extra bus. It's actually, we're right at that balance right now. That was part of the conversation that John was referencing with Lenny.
As long as Lenny or someone's looking into it, because with the growth of the middle school sports programs, I, I would think the need or the demand for, for busing is going to continue to increase, so.
But just for clarity, so adding this bus gives us two full-size buses and the little bus? Because we had a full-size and a little bus that we bought.
I believe it, I believe it is two full-size buses and a little bus.
Okay, okay.
But I'd, I'd double-check that to be sure, but I'm, I'm pretty certain that's the case.
I, I believe it to be, yes.
I'm, I'm pretty certain that's the case, but I don't want to, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty.
Okay.
All right. The next page just breaks down some of the instructional materials, consumables, and maintenance that we moved to one-time expenses for this particular budget year. The next sheet is just the Milford per people expenditure compared to the state average, and it breaks it down for the last six years. And I just thought that would be interesting information for the, the committee to have.
So, Kevin, on this one, because there's been a lot of discussion around this one. One of the pieces that's not calculated in, that's not being figured in yet for this, which it's coming up now, is the inclusive of the, of the new Woodland School, which would actually put us well above the state. I've come, so you've got some information from Zach today, that would actually put us, with the additional cost of the Woodland School, would actually put us actually well above the state average. As the Woodland School, we've been paying those bills, but they've actually not started to be calculated in. They will actually start in this next year, now that the project is complete. Those, those numbers will actually now start to count onto it, and that number, we'll see that number rise fairly significantly if you look at what the costs, what the costs are. And will actually, according to Zach, actually put us well above actually the state average for peripheral spend, spending, when you look at what the actual cost is, as Woodland comes on board, and those costs. So that's, this is absolutely, this is a hundred percent accurate information and, and, and we're facing, and that's all we have. That's historical data. Starting with this next year's budget that we're going through and negotiating and having that conversation right now and looking at, when we add the Woodland bill on top of it, we will go above the state average.
Right, and I'd, I'd want to see that, because when I did the math, we still weren't there. Because all it is, is you're adding in the debt payments, the annual debt payments to the budget. I mean, when you, when you factor that in, we're still, I think it goes up by about five, just under six hundred.
Zach's, Zach's calculations have actually put us fairly significantly above.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I think we should request that, that, that number if he has it readily available.
Yeah, I mean, I do think, yeah, I do think to that point, I do think there's some value as we continue to go forward, as we're continuing to go through and looking, looking at our budget and, and having these conversations, and maybe this goes under the future agenda items, I do think there's some value, and we've had him come before, before us in the past, is actually inviting Zach to a meeting with us so that we can talk about the town's impact, the budget, all of these different pieces, with somebody that, you know, we, we've got some newer members as well. We need to make sure that we understand as a full committee what our funding sources are, how chapter seventy is calculated, how chapter ninety is calculated, how these state averages are calculated, what's included, what's not included, how we do things in Milford, which is different than how other towns do things for what's included and what's not included in our budgets, because there's certain things that we don't include. So I think just taking a look at all those things is an overall, and certainly having someone like Zach and the Finance Committee as well. Finance Committee's advisory, Zach is, you know, the head of our finance, financial team, so, as the finance director. I, I would like to see us including him, but, and asking him to join us for one of our meetings, where we're able to address some of those things and, and get answers to those things as well.
Because it was my understanding as, as well, to Joe's point, that with the new Woodland School on board, it, it, it still keeps us under the per student. So you're, a great point, we should need to bring Zach in and get answers to that.
Yep, and just answer that question.
Yep.
Help us make a more informed, as, a, a further informed decision.
Yep, absolutely.
So the, the next sheet is just for the committee's information. It's the Milford teacher salary comparison compared to the state, just some other data points that we wanted to share. The following page is a ten-year school budget funding analysis that brings in the approved school budgets over the last ten years, the chapter seventy allocation, the local allocation, and the local impact increase each year, including our request for two thousand and seventeen. And again, these are based on projected numbers, at least the chapter seventy, numbers are projected for seventeen.
And again, I think the piece that's missing in this is, where I get concerned is, I think there's, there's been a lot of discussion over the last couple of weeks, and it's almost been portrayed as though the taxpayers in the town of Milford are not supportive of education to the full extent that they should be. And I, I personally, as an individual, I'm a taxpayer and a member of this board, have a problem with that. The taxpayers just approved and, and just are, are now in the process of being handed a bill in excess of thirty million dollars for a school that we just built. It's the right thing to do, it was the right thing for our students, it is the right thing for the town, but to say that we're, that from a school's perspective, the, it, it has come across and been brought up to my, and, and sort of been positioned as that the schools are not getting our fair share. And I, I don't think, I want to make sure that, and again, I can only speak for myself, that is certainly not the feeling that I have about the funding and the, and the support that the schools and, and that this committee has received from the taxpayers in the town of Milford. I understand where this is coming from. I understand the data that goes along with this. What I have a problem with is, is some of the conversations that have gone along with it, whether it's conversations in meetings, conversations in subcommittees, postings on social media. I want to make sure we're very clear, at, at least from where I stand, the taxpayers of Milford have always been exceptionally supportive of the schools. The, the Finance Committee has always been exceptionally supportive. It's a, it's an ongoing heated conversation, as it always is. Mike, you've been there for more of these conversations than I have, and I've been there for more than anyone else other than you. I want to make sure that that's something that's been conveyed. The way that we're going to be able to get this done is the way that Milford always gets these things done. We work collaboratively, we work together, they'll support, we'll continue to support our schools. I, I understand that this is data that's, that's valuable. I just want to make sure we're all very clear on this.
Well, to that point, Scott, though, I, you know, for the general public, I don't think the school committee has ever said that we felt that the taxpayers weren't giving us the respect that we deserved in our district. The concern is that it's working together with the Finance Committee to make sure, and we always do, we work very collaborative together, but it's not that we don't feel the taxpayers are working with us. We have to work with the Finance Committee to make sure that we're getting the best for the district. And we do work collaboratively, but I, I, I think, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I'm speaking for myself as chairman. I never once felt that the taxpayers of the town of Milford were not behind this.
And I'm happy to hear, and again, I, I can only speak for myself, and I'm, I'm glad that you're on the same page. The, the way that things have, the, the way that things have been positioned over the last couple of weeks, that's a concern, that it's, it's come back to me, and I've had people stop me and go, well, how come the town's not supporting the schools? Whoa, 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 whoa. The town is supporting the schools as they always have. Well, why are they, you know, why is our funding so much lower? Is the town not supporting the schools? That's the way it's being perceived, and I want to make sure that I'm very clear, because I can only control what I think, that the taxpayers have always been and continue to be.
Very supportive.
Very supportive of the schools. And it's not that we don't feel as though we're getting our fair share. We want to make sure when we come forward with this type of information, it's good information to have, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page with it.
Yep. Joe?
So, in, in all fairness, and you're absolutely right, taxpayers have always supported our schools to the extent that they can, but in all fairness, a lot of the noise that you're hearing out there is a direct result of that budget proposal that FinCom put forth when we last met with them. They came in and asked us to cut our budget. So when the people in the community hear that, they're going to be concerned, right? And that, that's why you're hearing that concern. Now, whether that was a realistic request or not, we can't answer that, that's on them, but I think that's where some of the concern you're hearing is coming from.
And again, it's, you know, it's, it's feedback that I'm getting out there. I think part of it is, is again, it's, it's working collaboratively with the Finance Committee. You know, I've, I've heard from members of the public that have, and I've watched it and witnessed it firsthand, members of the public that are, based on feedback that's come and, and information that we've provided, that are going now back to Finance Committee members, and it's, you know, it, it, the perception is, is that the school committee and the Finance Committee are at odds with each other. And I, for one, will refuse, refuse to be part of and, and be engaged in, and any type of a, I'm okay with having heated debate. I'm okay with having, you know, you know, robust conversations. We're not here to declare war on other committees. We're all volunteers working together.
But I, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't say we're at war, and I wouldn't say we're at odds. Are we in heavy discussion?
I understand that, I'm just saying, it's, yep, and I agree, it's heavy discussion. I, I, the perception has come around that that's, that that's, that that's the viewpoint, and I want to make sure we clear that.
It was always like that, my eight years on the board, it's always been.
I agree, and I just want to make sure that I, you know, again, I can only control my, what I say and what my feelings are. You know, that's, I want to make sure that we could, that I clear that up, at least from my position. I'm glad you were as well.
Just also to that point, I know because of the election season, a lot of things are coming up, but the one thing that I did hear that I thought made a lot of sense came from Marie Parenti at the Citizens Forum, where she talked about in the past when multiple boards would get together and talk about where are we going as a town, and how can we work? Because we, while we do work closely with the FinCom, there are other boards that I think make an impact on how we look at our town as a whole, and I think that it would be in our best interest to spend some time making sure that all of our boards are educated, because I think a lot of what's happening right now is people are trying to clarify, why are we asking for this, why are we looking for that? There's a lot of reasons behind the numbers, and I think there's been a lot of conversation about trying to explain and rationalize. So I think the more we can continue to be communicative and make sure that the actual facts are out there from the school department, I think that will benefit everybody moving forward, not just in election season, but all the time. So I, I think that would be another thing we may want to think about putting on our future agenda, is what that will look like moving forward.
Okay, Mike, John?
No, I don't have anything. What I was going to say is if we can not belabor this presentation any longer and go through, because I think we beat this topic to death at this point.
See, go ahead.
All ready to move on? All right, so I just want to share school choice data. We, we shared this, we shared historical data with both the Finance Committee and the School Committee previously, but I think it's important to note that the outgoing increase last year of school choice, students going out, was one point oh one percent, which is the lowest increase in the last five years. The incoming increase was twenty-six point two-five percent, which is the largest increase in the last three years. And families that have already chanced out are unlikely to return, based on some work we did, the, over the last couple of years, surveying families that had school choice out of Milford. But if you see, if this trend continues, you're going to see a pretty significant shift in the numbers, and we really believe that we will see this trend continue over time, because we feel like we have an outstanding product in the Milford Public Schools.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
No, no, to John's point, I'll wait till the end.
All right, and then my last piece is just reiterating the proposal, which is the last page, which is a two point four-one percent to the general bu, budget, two point five percent to the special education and English learners' budget, for a total fiscal year two thousand and eighteen request of forty-six million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred, which I'm requesting the full committee to possibly discuss and then blow it out.
Okay. Just a couple of things. So just to the general public, and I know that it's been out there that the school committee is looking to propose a six percent budget increase. I just want to make it very clear tonight that it is not anywhere near six percent. It is the general public. It is, the general ed budget is two point four, and the special education budget is two point five, for a combined total of four point nine. The second question I have for you is, and Joe and I were discussing this earlier, did we not at the last meeting vote on the four point nine percent increase? I mean, we can revote it, I mean, if you're comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable revoting and discussing, because we were actually, we pushed forward the four point nine, but we also were asked to look at four point five, four point oh. There was four or five different scenarios we were asked to look at, and I just want to make sure that we're clear as far as it go forward.
Okay, and with that, all, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I know that when last we met with the Finance Committee, and I understand the subcommittee has met with them subsequently, or has met individually, has met as a subcommittee since. When last we met with the Finance Committee, what they were asking us to look at as well was, they had gone through as they do, and has done with the School Committee in the past, which is when we've had peel outs such as, last year we had eight hundred thousand dollars in special education budget reduction. It was not peeled out of our budget, it was then peeled back in, so it's.
So can I actually answer that first question for you?
Yeah, so it was more just, and you can answer it as the overall, Kevin, so. They had come through and they'd come with us with a list, and I apologize, I wish I brought it with me tonight. I should have brought it with me tonight. They had come through with a list of, hey, here's where we see our starting point based off of backouts of the budget, of the one-time expenses for the budget, and then seeing the increase from there. And again, I certainly understand the two point four one versus, and the two point five versus, you know, four point nine one total. Where, because that's going to be a question we're going to have to answer.
Yeah, so.
When we next we go back.
I can hit a few of those.
Yeah, especially the big ones, the eight hundred.
Can we just clarify one point before? We haven't had any subcommittee meetings or full school committee meetings since our last meeting.
Right.
With the FinCom school budget.
There was one subcommittee meeting that occurred.
There was not.
There was not, okay, I apologize, I thought there was one budget, there was, there was one budget subcommittee meeting that happened last Monday.
It was scheduled, we wanted to deliberate before we met.
No, that was this past, that was this Monday where we were supposed to meet with the Finance Committee, last Monday.
We met.
You met, the budget subcommittee had a meeting scheduled for March sixteenth, did that meeting not have?
That turned into a full school committee meeting, we met here with the FinCom Subcommittee.
No one met March sixteenth, because that was citizens from Milford night, I think everything was canceled that night, isn't it?
Not March sixteenth, I can tell you the date.
No, but the Monday of that.
No, that Monday one got canceled.
That's when we all met with FinCom.
The twentieth. So the sixteenth, the thirteenth we all met with Fin, the thirteenth we met with FinCom. The sixteenth, we did not have a meeting.
Because citizens of Milford?
Citizens of Milford. The twentieth, there was a budget subcommittee meeting that was scheduled for that day, and then there was supposed to be a subsequent meeting this past Monday, the twenty-seventh. So something's changed.
Yeah, so the twenty-seventh meeting was canceled.
That one I know, it was the twentieth meeting in the Budget Committee. And again, if there's been no meeting, then that's good.
I don't remember the specifics on whether it was canceled.
Because it was three, it was three consecutive Mondays that we were supposed to have meetings.
But there was no, there has been no meeting since we met as a full committee with that subcommittee.
Which is fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Which keeps us all on the same page.
Yeah, and that's good, my understanding was that there was a meeting that was scheduled for the twentieth.
Right.
And then there was another one scheduled for the twenty-seventh. There was three consecutive Mondays there were meetings. There was one with the full committee and the Finance Committee, just the subcommittee meeting the following.
Okay.
Yeah, so let me address some of the bigger numbers at least, and then, just give me one second. So, the first one I think was a miscommunication, because the eight hundred and fifty-three thousand for special ed, it was actually eight hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars actually came off the top of the budget last year, so it was actually pulled out of the budget last year.
Okay.
So that was actually, just a miscommunication happened. Just like we add money in when the number goes up, we subtracted it out because the number went down by that amount. And that was really the biggest number. The other question that came up, that I think there were some significant numbers thrown around, were the cost of East and Woodland versus the cost of the new Woodland. And we haven't been through a full year yet at the new Woodland Elementary School. But what we're finding is because of the size of the building and the actual use of the building, the cost of the new Woodland building is actually higher than the cost of running the old Woodland and the old, and the East. I'm calling it Old East, but there's just one East. That was another piece, and I think the one-time expenses that they were referring to, there's a lot of different explanations for those. Over the years, a lot of that has come out of, they were on initial proposals, and they were on budget requests, but they, a lot of times came off and were covered with one-time expense money, similar to what we're doing this year. I couldn't speak to all of them individually, because I don't have them in front of me. But I think the big ticket number is the eight fifty-three, eight forty-four, which was last year's special education out of district tuition, was actually a decrease to the budget, and that came off the top of the budget last year.
So, can I add to that?
Absolutely.
The FinCom Subcommittee came to us with a proposal to review these numbers, the one-time expenses. Personally, I think there were some errors in the representation of some of those one-time expenses. I, we had that discussion that, that night. But as a committee, we haven't revisited their request, I think that's where we stand. Dr. McIntyre just pointed out possibly some errors in their analysis, but as a committee, we haven't done anything with that request as we stand right now. Without getting into those, we can certainly get into them now or whenever, but.
And I apologize, I had the dates incorrect. So we had a meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting on March second, our regular school committee meeting. Monday the sixth was when we met with the Finance Committee last. And then the thirteenth of March was the date of the proposed budget Subcommittee meeting. That was the, that was the, those were the actual dates that I, because I just pulled them up in my calendar.
I didn't pull them up.
So, I just pulled them up in my calendar, so again.
But regardless, the last time we met with the FinCom.
Either way, yeah, that's fine. I realize that nobody's met with the FinCom, but I know the budget Subcommittee meeting had at least a meeting scheduled for the thirteenth of March.
Our meeting with the full committee was thirteen.
Okay. The, that being said, I, you know, hearing what John was saying as well, where are we with some of those budget payouts? Because that's something that, the number that they were looking at was much larger.
We'll be prepared to speak to on April twelfth when we meet with, is the full Finance Committee or the Subcommittee on the twelfth?
We're inviting the full.
Oh, the tenth, I'm sorry, the tenth.
The full committee is going to be invited to that.
Okay, so we'll have kind of incorporated into this presentation kind of a point, point, point explanation of each of those numbers.
We have a School Committee meeting next week, so Kathy will be here for that one, so maybe we can bring in.
And we can give a preview, you know, at that meeting as well.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
No, thank you, Kevin, that's good stuff, great, that points out everything.
If they get to a vote, then so we'll prove the, for clarity again, the two point four one percent general budget, two point five special education budget, and ELL, can I have a motion to accept?
And just for clarity's sake, this is to bring forth to the, to the next School Committee, I'm sorry, to the Finance Committee? This is not to bring forward to town meeting.
No, 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 this is our next.
This is to our finance, to meet with our finance partners.
Correct, yes. Motion from, okay, Joe, second from John, all in favor? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. John. Dr. Nice, John.
No, there was.
Point of order, I think it was six in favor.
It was six in favor, and.
One opposed.
Yeah, and one opposed.
Oh, I thought you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
I did not, no, one opposed, I'm not, I, I'm not comfortable with being able to vote on this. Again, I think we should invite Zach to a meeting before we move forward to the, to the full Finance Committee to be able to answer some of these additional questions and understanding some, some of these details a little bit further as we continue to go forward and bring this forward. And again, I know that we're meeting with them, but.
Erica, you got, caught that, that, okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I thought he had his hand up, but, okay, thank you. Okay, next agenda item is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Mr. Dickinson.
He's playing the role of Kathy Perry this evening.
Today we have thirteen warrants that we need to vote on?
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
We have met in three weeks, we've got a lot of bills to pay.
First warrant in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
Second warrant in the amount of eighteen thousand sixty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
Third in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Motion from Joe Calery, second from Jim Legore, all in favor?
Fourth in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
Fifth in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
Sixth in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred sixty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion from Joe Calery, second from Jim Legore, all in favor?
Seventh in the amount of ninety-six thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion from John, second by Joe, all in favor?
Eighth in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Motion from Scott, second by Jen, all in favor?
Ninth in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion from Jim Legore, second by Joe Calery, all in favor?
Tenth in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion from Joe Marais, second by John, all in favor?
Eleventh in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion from Scott, second by Jen, all in favor?
Twelfth in the amount of six thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion from Joe Calery, second by Jen, all in favor? This is a record.
Thirteenth in the amount of two hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion from Joe Marais, second by Jen, Joe Calery, all in favor?
That's a lot of money we just spent in less than three minutes.
In my eight years, I think that's going to be the biggest we've ever done.
Imagine that, Kathy's not here.
He's a piece of cake, nothing to do.
That's why I was supportive of you for this position, Craig, you're very efficient.
All right, thank you.
All right, we do have some gifts I see here.
We do.
Okay, the first one here is the J.S. Lim Foundation, the Purposes for Math and Science Award. The total amount of the gift is three thousand dollars.
Do you want to vote them all together?
Um, sure.
Hold on, I just got paper clips here. All right, we're good. And the second one is Great West Life and Annuity Insurance Company, another nice gift, the Memorial Playground renovation in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Wow, nice. Do we need to, do we need to separate them, because I don't know if I can vote on that one?
Oh, yeah, maybe you do need to separate them.
Because of the playground?
Yeah, well, because it's from my company.
Oh, oh, okay, all right, all right, so let's do the first one, which is the J.S. Lim Foundation. Can I have a motion from John, second from Joe Calery, all in favor? This is the one you have abstained from the Great West. Okay, and the second one is the Great West Life Annuity Insurance Company, motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor? Thank you very much, one extension?
Both very generous guys.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you very much, Joe, and the other. Okay, and we'll get letters out of those, as we always do.
Absolutely.
Okay, subcommittee updates. The first one is budget.
We've knocked enough about that one.
Want to pass over it?
I think, yeah, we've given enough of an update, yeah.
We got that one.
We actually had a wellness meeting yesterday, Craig was there. It was a very interesting meeting, talking about social behavioral issues, suicide prevention, criteria, and Dr. Periello was there, and Dr. Periello actually brought a, from, I believe it was Columbia University, wasn't that where he got it?
Yeah.
Basically, a flow chart to use in suicide prevention, and the questions that they actually, you know, use. But, you know, I have to be honest, I think that that took up the largest part of the meeting was the social, emotional, and suicide prevention, you know, issues that are going on in the schools, and how well, how well they're being addressed, but how we can improve them, you know, more. You know, Mrs. Dagnes is, in my opinion, right on top of it. And then, you know, we got off of that, we talked about the Special Olympics Games are coming up, and, you know, that week, the events that are planned for that week, Jen Walsh reached out to us and said that anybody, April twenty-fourth, Craig? I think is the date?
I'm not sure the exact date.
But anybody that could possibly help out on that day for the Special Olympics Games Day, she'd love to have us there. So it was, it was, the meeting was very well done, so.
Can we just, can we get that invite out to the whole committee as a calendar invite, just so we can?
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
But I think what's a big help on the Wellness Committee is when we get into discussions, and I think Craig would agree with me, when we get into discussions that are like that, as far as the social, emotional, and the suicide, having Dr. Periello in the room as a pediatrician, because one of the things that we talked about is, and I had experience with it about ten, fifteen years ago with being involved at Tri-County, we had a young man, unfortunately, who took his life in Sherbin, and then now the friend of his went right after him. And so we brought in a counselor that walks around the school and just, you know, is among the children, asking very specific questions, and the way the children respond back, they can tell they're thinking of it. They call them euphoric thoughts. So I'm going to go see Johnny, we talked about this yesterday, I'm going to go see Johnny, but I'll be back Friday, because I got my math final, and that's what happens to them, and these people that are, these counselors are able to get that worked out. So I looked at Dr. Periello and I said, "Doctor, when do you think that we should really start screening these children?" And he basically came back and said, "At sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level." You know, which to me, I was like, but, you know, and then he spoke about it, you know, and they did a really nice job. It's that, you've got to get it at the beginning, you know, because if you get it in the middle, it's too hard and, or too late, you know? So, so it was great to have him there as a pediatrician to really explain it to us, and what he's seen over his years of being a pediatrician, so.
It's the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
We'll get it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Calendar, that'd be great.
So if we can all chip in to help Jen Walsh out that week, that'd be great, she's a great lady.
And it's an awesome event, too.
Yes, it is.
It really is. If I'm having that, it's great. I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Next agenda item is future agenda items, does anybody have?
Yes, sir.
So I, the Long Range Planning Committee has been meeting throughout the school year to look at the building of the next long-range education plan for the Milford Public Schools and the town of Milford. And one of the recommendations that's come out of the committee is to have NESDAQ, which is the New England, the New England School Development Council, come in to present their proposal on a long-range school facilities master plan, which is kind of part of the long-range planning process. And we want them to kind of explain what they do, what services they provide, and what the final product would be. I don't know if any members want to add, I don't know if John or Joe or Craig wants to.
Just for the committee, the last long-range ed plan was based on this exact document, and it was created in nineteen ninety-seven. So anything that you read on the long-range ed planning side of, really, there was four or five of them throughout the years, they all point back to this document from nineteen ninety-seven. So we felt like that was the next logical step.
Which was done by this company here?
Yep.
And we're a member of NESDAQ as well, they do our enrollment projections, as well as provide a number of other services.
Well, I would think that, I would agree, I think that's something that we should do, because, I don't know about any other member, but they're starting to have a conversation now in the community that, about the high school. And I keep trying to tell everybody, that's a ways off, we haven't even, but unfortunately, people get nervous. So maybe if we could work with them and get some preliminary documentation put together, you know, that we could have on hand.
If it's the committee's pleasure, I'd love to invite them in at a future meeting.
Yes, yeah, so essentially, what came from our Long Range Planning Committee was to present this as a possible future agenda item for NESDAQ to come out and present to the committee what they would provide for, in a document, if we choose to engage their services. Sorry about that. Come into Lowe's if anybody says.
Free school committee sponsored by Lowe's.
No idea where that came from.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
No, and then other future agenda items, if I may. I actually had somebody approach me, one of our, actually heard from some parents as well, it's actually one of our, one of our crossing guards, just with regards to our crosswalks. You know, the question was, is that, the original question was, hey, can somebody paint, repaint some of their crosswalks? They're starting to get a little faded. I don't even think that's within us, I think that actually may be the combination of the Highway Department.
I don't, I, I don't even think that's within us. I think that actually may be the combination of the Highway Department as well as public safety. John is the building commissioner, you may be able to speak better than I could, but, uh, who would we go to around getting some of the crosswalks sort of darkened, repainted?
Yeah, that would, that would be the role of the, the Highway Department.
That's what I would figure.
Highways, so they would make that call.
Yeah, perfect. So if we can just, if we can make that request and, and get in contact with Scotty through that.
To be clear, we're talking about existing sidewalks that have just faded, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, we're not adding new ones. Not adding any new ones. That's true, that requires a traffic study, that's definitely, you know, this is.
Would you prefer I just made the request to Highway rather than?
Yeah, just have them review if there's, yeah, as, not as an agenda item, but just looking at that as well as, uh, you know, just putting that request through.
We can definitely do that.
Is it just like all crosswalks or just?
Yes, I mean, there was a few various, I mean, Memorial was one, that one right across from Memorial, you can barely see it. Um, you know, there, I've had, I've had, I've had teachers at, um, at all schools, um, that are out doing bus stop duty that've talked about the fact of, you know, they almost feel like they're taking their own life in their hands when they're out there doing some of those duties. Um, just ask as a, as a request from, from the teachers as well as for the schools, "Parents, please slow down. Um, just drive slowly, it's, I got it, we're all late for work, we all wanna make sure," and the majority of parents do as we're driving through, just, it just asks that people, as you're, as, if you're not dropping off a child, but as you're going through that area and just for the residents in general, um, please be patient. We understand that it creates traffic patterns and creates additional congestion when we're doing, when there's drop off and when the school buses are coming through, but it, it's for the safety of the students as well as the teachers that are out there and, and trying to make sure that our, that our children are safe.
Thank you. Thank you. Joe?
Just one more, um, agenda item. If we could at a future meeting invite our, our representatives in, invite Brian and Ryan Fatman and just, uh, just tied back to the conversation about a budget, about the budget, we wanna have a conversation with them about the foundation budget and the state funding. Um, the current formula, we've talked about this in the past, is, is outdated and there's a recommendation on the table to, um, make some changes. So we'd like to get their opinion and their thoughts on that and find ways, you know, see if we can advocate for additional funding there.
Yes, absolutely. It's me, Ryan, and Brian, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Any, any discussion? Okay, old business? Anybody have any old business? Yes, Jen?
I wanted to go back to budget from earlier. Um, when we talked about the next meeting, are we talking about having Zach come to our next school committee meeting or were we talking more in generalities?
It wouldn't be for the, uh, uh, April sixth one, I think that agenda's more than full. I think it would be the, the second one.
I think it's probably posted, I think it's more than long-term.
Yeah, it may, it probably won't be the, after the April sixth, 'cause for S- um, Scott, who's gonna be traveling, I had to move, I moved two agenda items for him because his daughter, the cheerleaders are coming in and the request for, um, Tim and Nancy to come in.
Mm-hmm.
And Scott wanted to be here and so in fairness, I moved two of those off, so the next two agendas are pretty full.
Pretty full.
So are we, will we be meeting with the FinCom again before we meet with Zach?
We meet with the FinCom on, yeah, April tenth.
Okay, so is that meeting our meeting that we've invited them to or is it, the, who, whose meeting is that?
It's.
I believe that's, uh.
It was posted by both of us.
Both of us, yeah.
Posted by both of us.
The reason, I guess the reason why I'm asking is, um, I think it would be beneficial if we could come up with some kind of agenda before we enter those meetings, because every time I sit in one of those meetings, it feels like a ping pong match and we're back and forth and the topic changes. If, if we have several different kinds of questions for Zach or that we want collectively between us and the FinCom to propose to Zach, 'cause it also feels like a lot of people are governing Zach and we all seem to, maybe we're getting the same answers, maybe we're getting different answers. But if we could at least create an agenda of how we want that meeting to run with the specific questions, maybe we could have input ahead of time on what do we wanna see, what are our outcomes for the meeting that, that we have with the FinCom? So when we're sitting there, it's not just stuff getting pulled out of the air or out of somebody's personal notebook. It would be nice to just have some, some organization to it.
Why don't we ask Zach to come to that meeting? Have that one be the bone that Zach's at, probably makes the most sense and the most workable.
Yeah, I think that would.
Have that be the one where Zach attends.
To answer your question, Jen, as far as whose meeting, I did have a conversation with Jerry Moody on the last one.
Uh-huh.
We had posted the meeting, they had posted the meeting, but because it's in our building.
Right.
It's, it is our, it's our meeting. So I will reach out to Jerry and just make sure that that, that is an accurate statement. It's, you know, it still is on the second round and I'll get you an answer on that. But that was the answer that Jerry gave me. Even though we post, they post, it's our building, it's our meeting. Not that we wanna have the happy heels and the cores, but.
If we jointly create an agenda, so, um, for example, one of the email, I, I read it somewhere, a question was raised about, um, what would the impact to the town be with X percentage? Would there, would it be detrimental if we go to X percent? And how would that impact us as a town? Is that a question that we wanna see on an agenda so we can at least discuss it?
Right.
I just think it's helpful for all of us to know ahead of time what is being asked at the meeting and what do we expect to get out of it by the end.
A healthy conversation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, two points. I think we definitely need an agenda item for these future meetings because, a- and I think we need a preview of the information to be presented because to, to get it dropped verbally or passed out, um, as the discussion's going on, doesn't give anybody time to review their notes when, when, when you're discussing things that have been done in the past. Uh, so I, I absolutely agree with that. Um, when you talk about the impact to the whole town, I, I can tell you, and again, we should be having these conversations more as a group with our finance director than individually, but in my conversations with him, at this point today, there's too many moving parts to give you a, a specific answer. He can tell you based on his projections, but, you know, we don't know exactly what we're getting for state aid and, and there's, there's too many moving parts to be accurate at this point in the, in the analysis. But, yeah, I mean, I think that's all of our goals is to consider the overall time, talent finances when we'll make and, you know, our, our, our requests to the taxpayers for our budget.
It's one of the challenging parts of governmental budgets, which is you get told what your budget, you get told how much money you actually get after you have to submit all your budgets. It's the, it's, it's a reverse.
Right.
Oh, it's almost dead. Uh, it's a reverse of how a normal, logical thinking human being would be, which is, "Tell me how much money I've got and then we'll make sure we spend the, spend the right, spend it appropriately." It's exactly the opposite when you're doing governmental budgets. It's figure out how much you wanna spend and then, well, oh, by the way, we'll come back and tell you how much money you get from the state after the fact and then you have to go back and rearrange and, and readjust afterward. That's how money ends up being, free cash and things of that interest, so.
And then if I could just add about, you know, whose meeting is it? Uh, the right thing to do is for both, both committees to post the meeting. Personally, I don't care who leads the meeting, but if we both, neither committee can, a committee can only deliberate if it's a posted meeting. So if one of us didn't, you know, to be technical, didn't post, we couldn't deliberate and, and, and make decisions that we need to make. So it's, it's the best practice for both to, both to post the meeting. And as far as who leads it, I think that's something that can even be decided when the, when the meeting opens. I mean, that's not a.
Yeah, I, I guess.
A big concern of mine.
I think it should be collaborative, no matter, and I agree about posting it. I think if, if we could collaborate on the agenda so we all know, to your point, if this paperwork, we could see ahead of time, so we could digest some of that or at least know what questions we need to ask. That would be helpful, 'cause it's really hard to do that with, there's a lot of numbers flying around those meetings. It's hard to do that on the fly.
Yeah, we all have files that are, that are at home and not, you know, with us to look up at that moment. We wanna, we wanna bring the material, we need to be productive.
Any other member? Okay, we do have an executive, executive session this evening for the AFSCME union negotiations. We will not return to regular session and with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Motion from Scott, second from Joe Calery, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, we do, can you take roll for the?
Yep, roll call, please.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, good night.